Oh, the invocation, I'm so sorry, by Pastor Doug Reed, pastor of Coast City Church.[35.18-36.18]
At this point, if I could invite the representatives from the San Diego Humane Society?[121.11-122.11]
No, I'll introduce her first.[122.11-123.11][S08] Hi, thank you, everybody.[123.11-128.16][S08] First, I, well, Aisha is our new campus director in Oceanside.[128.16-131.16][S08] And we're putting her to work right away, getting out our kittens here.[131.16-133.16][S08] We'll see if they want to join us or not.[133.16-138.16][S08] You know, summertime is when we have a lot of kittens, so we want to invite you to our[138.16-145.16][S08] website or to our Airport Road location to meet the many kittens we have.[145.16-147.16][S08] So first, we're going to meet Octavia.[147.16-152.16][S08] She's a three-month-old, obviously, black-and-white kitten.[152.16-157.47][S08] And she came to us as a stray with her litter mate, Emery.[157.47-160.97][S08] And Octavia's more the outgoing kind, and Emery, Emery's a little bit more shy.[160.97-163.16][S08] She really relies on Octavia.[163.16-168.81][S08] They were in foster care where we learned that Octavia will go up for purrs with strangers.[168.81-170.23][S08] She loves to play.[170.23-174.29][S08] She followed her caretaker around, where Emery really kind of followed Octavia around.[174.29-178.16][S08] So we always recommend two kittens, if you can.[178.16-182.31][S08] Adoption fees are typically $125, but that includes their spay and neuter, their microchip,[182.31-188.16][S08] their vaccinations, and a free vet visit, and a free month of pet insurance, and so[188.16-189.16][S08] on, and so on.[189.16-192.16][S08] But if you adopt two, it is still $125.[192.16-195.16][S08] So you can take them both home.[195.16-200.23][S08] However, another reminder is that if you're 55 and older, those adoption fees are waived[200.23-202.16][S08] for any animal.[202.16-205.16][S08] So it's dogs, cats, bunnies.[205.16-207.16][S08] We have hamsters right now.[207.16-210.16][S08] So we invite you to come on down.[210.16-212.16][S08] And then a reminder that our Clear the Shelters Day, it's a national event going[212.16-217.16][S08] on all across the country, where all shelters that are participating will be waiving adoption[217.16-220.16][S08] fees on August 18th.[220.16-224.16][S08] So for those of you not 55 and older, and you want to take advantage of that, we invite[224.16-229.16][S08] you to Airport Road, our office in Louis Ray, to meet our dogs.[229.16-232.16][S08] It will be very busy, so bring your patience.[232.16-235.16][S08] But take a peek at our website, see if there's anybody you're interested in adopting, and[235.16-236.16][S08] those fees are waived.[236.16-238.16][S08] However, we will take donations.[238.16-240.16][S08] They are always welcome.[240.16-244.16][S08] So we invite you out to that very special day, and we're open from 10 to 6.[244.16-247.16][S08] So we will see you in a couple of months.[247.16-248.16][S08] Thanks so much.[248.16-249.16]
Thank you.[249.16-250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16][250.16]
...sleeping, littering, defecating, dealing drugs and loitering. This was a huge problem for both the homeowners and for all the people in and out of our park who live there or walk through there or drive through there to take their kids to school. We are all valued contributory residents to the community. We all need to be more flexible and try to find a solution that will work for everyone, collaborate. With this, without this gate open, we only have one way in and out. The residents up on the hill have many outlets to get to and from their homes. We would like that opportunity too. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Alva Bretto.
I've been living in Cavaliers since 2011. I have a baby. I'm concerned. Especially with the fires going on. For people that have come through our neighborhood, they see that we only have one main access exit prior to having the gate open. And that one is one that connects through Oceanside Boulevard and it's always high traffic in that area. But prior to getting into that, we have only two bridges that is just one way out. So if everybody was trying to get out of the neighborhood, it would be impossible. So I know that for our houses, if our houses were to get burned, it would take probably five minutes. And we don't have that time. So we need the bucket to be open. Thank you.
Arden Miller.
Hello Mayor and Council members. My name's Arden Miller. I'm the Treasurer for the Homeowners Association of the Cavalier Mobile State. I was asked by the President Bob to represent us as the HOA. As you've heard, this back exit, if Stewart Street's unhappy, we're sorry, but we need that for emergency access. The Fire Department now takes them three minutes to get into the park to help our elderly residents versus 10 to 15 minutes going all the way around and coming around whether they send them from Station, was that Two and Three? Them from Three, it's longer than Two, it's right down the hill. It's really important that that stays open. It allows us an emergency egress, it allows us regular egress too, to get on the Five faster. If you get on the Five from Oceanside Boulevard, it takes you 10 minutes from the, from the lights up to 78. If you go up the other way and come out on Cassidy, it takes you about two, about three minutes. And that's at a 20 mile an hour speed limit. I timed it the other day. Really important we do this and leave it open. I understand it is private property. Thank you for bringing that up, Mrs. Sanchez. And we appreciate that and it is. I'm a resident there, a homeowner there, and I appreciate your, this inform, you allowing me to speak. Thank you.
Great. Ken Rollins.
My name's Ken Rollins. I've lived in the park since 69. So I've been there quite a while. And I've experienced the gate being opened before. And the traffic gets really, really fast in the park. I just want to let you know that. Like even delivery trucks, UPS, and that. And they all just don't follow the speed limit, which I'm sure nobody knows what the speed limit is in Cavaliers.
Five miles an hour.
You do?
Five miles an hour.
It's 15 miles an hour.
Oh, 15.
So we're gonna have to deal with that situation if we keep the park open, the gate open. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
No more speakers on item number 20.
Item 21.
21. First we have Sophie Wolfram.
My name is Sophie Wolfram. I'm the Director of Programs for Climate Action Campaign, which is an advocacy organization that supports the development and adoption of local climate action plans in the San Diego region. And I just wanted to come out tonight to say that we are very pleased that Oceanside is currently developing a climate action plan that will set legally binding targets for the city. The need to steeply reduce emissions is urgent and we know how to do it. And cutting emissions from the electricity and transportation sectors is particularly important because those are our most significant emission sectors and where we can get kind of the biggest bang for our buck. We need leadership from every one of our cities to get emissions down to safe levels. And we want to urge Oceanside to take the lead of every other city in the region that's adopted a climate action plan since 2015. All six of those cities have set targets of achieving 100% clean energy by either 2030 or 2035, depending on their target year. And they've all set community choice as the strategy to get there. The transition to 100% clean energy is the most significant action a local government can take to reduce emissions and community choice is the only viable strategy to meet that target. Community choice programs are currently operating successfully in over 140 cities in California. They're saving residents and businesses money and they're accelerating the transition to clean energy. So I've had the chance to meet with some of you already and hope to continue working with members of this council to ensure that the climate action plan both meets legal requirements but also maximizes opportunities to reduce emissions and improve quality of life for all residents in Oceanside. Thank you.
Next we have William Allen and Maria Allen.
My name is William Allen. I'm also known as Musically Dwelling on Thoughts, for short as M.D. That's my soon to be wife Maria. We are representatives of Sick Dreams Music. We are here to inform the city of Oceanside that we will be having a backpack drive for kids raising from grades kindergarten through 12. It will be Saturday, August 18th, from 2 o'clock to 6 o'clock PM at the Midnight Jack Brewery here in Oceanside. There at the event, we will have food available, games, we'll have live performances from youth, from our community, sponsors all over from Los Angeles down to San Diego. There will be a talent show. The talent, the winner of the talent show will come down to a studio called The Beat Shop in El Cajon and will be able to create music in a live studio with myself. And it will all be live then promoted on social media. Donations accepted will be all school supplies such as pencils, papers, folders, binders, lunch pails, writing utensils, books, and of course, book bags. Donation boxes are all around town in Oceanside, from Mad Strange to local wear off El Camino, different barber shops and salons all around the community. Here at Sick Dreams, we do more than just make quality music based out of Oceanside. We're very much all about the community. From our local based underground radio station hosted by Maria, going as her entertainment name for a deuce, to our vending stand at the street fair on Thursdays, to our newest 501 global support group called The Legal Fathers. We start at the root of our community and that's at the youth, the children.
Thank you.
We do have physical flyers. If you want to contact with us later after the meeting, we will be available for that. Also, we do have a list of, a signup list if you want to donate or if you know of any needy families. Also, if you need to get, get in contact with us for more information, you can reach us at our email, koo royalty, that's K-O-O royalty at gmail dot com. We had a goal of 120 backpacks for this year. Last year, we had 40 backpacks. And in the future years, we plan to connect and partner with other organizations so that no child goes without a backpack in Oceanside. I don't think anything else. And our organization, Sick Dreams Music Group, spelled with S-I-Q-Q, so for short, two Qs, and that's a very peaceful saying, so two Qs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Drew Andreyoff.
Good evening Mayor and Council members. I'm here tonight to address the issue that we've been experiencing in the airport community of Waynes View Estates. We have been having objects falling from the sky from Go Jump Oceanside. Just on Sunday, we had a chute fall down in the neighborhood. This is the third time this has happened. We've had GoPro cameras fall from the sky, shoes, other belongings from jumpers. I realized that our city manager has spoken with the Go Jump community. I spoke with my homeowners association and they said that it's something that they're trying to address. I'd just like to make the council aware of this and this is an ongoing issue that we've been having. It's a family neighborhood. We have lots of children in the neighborhood, so it is a danger to the residents of the community. So I'd like to address this. I'm hoping that we can find a resolution where we can try to remedy this without any injuries, let alone property damage, auto damage, things of that sort. And I do actually have a picture here. I don't know if the camera's working today. That's a, one of the packs that we had fall on Sunday and like I said, it's been the third time, so hopefully we can find a solution to this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Andreyoff, do you have a record of these, like when the, when the objects fell from the sky?
No, we haven't. For the first couple of times, we weren't fully aware of it. It's become more of an issue recently and we have, I believe the instructors or the owners of the company coming through and they kind of creep through the neighborhood looking for the items that have been dropped, looking in people's backyards, asking people. And now it's also becoming a point where we have residents in our neighborhood that are kind of becoming scared of the objects dropping, but as long, at the same time, we're having people afraid that they may be looking to case for robberies. I don't think that's the situation. I think they're just looking for personal belongings. But like I said, this is, we have kids playing outside. Beyond that, we have elderly residents too. I mean, anything that's falling from 10, 12,000 feet is gonna cause some damage eventually. Luckily, that's not been the case yet, but it's, it's a real danger.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Kelly McCormick.
I'm Kelly McCormick. Thank you for your time. I would like to bring your attention to a significant new ruling that opens the door for the neighbors of marijuana businesses to file federal lawsuits against them based on the Federal Racketeering and Corrupt Organizations Act, also known as RICO. This decision comes from the 10th Circuit Court in the case of Safe Streets Alliance versus Hickenlooper. The lawsuit was brought against a marijuana farm in Pueblo, Colorado, by the couple who owned property next door and were subjected to the noxious fumes of pot plants. The court ruled that a state licensed marijuana business may be sued for diminishing the market value of nearby properties and emitting an unpleasant odor. The court upheld that property owners who lived next to marijuana growers could recover monetary damages for three types of property injuries. One, for the interference with the use and enjoyment of their land caused by noxious odors emanating from the marijuana grower's operation. Two, the decrease of the land's value presently caused by the odors. And three, the decrease in the land's value presently caused by the existence of a publicly disclosed, ongoing criminal enterprise adjacent to their land. Keep in mind that while the pot businesses were, was state licensed, it remains illegal under federal law. Plaintiff who wins civil RICO cases are entitled to collect three times their damages plus attorney's fees. It's expected that this decision will encourage other property owners to file additional RICO suits against the marijuana industry. Any city that cares about its current residents and property owners would be wise to consider the widespread problem of odor from pot cultivation and the potential for lengthy and expensive litigation. Thank you.
No further public on this item.
22.
Yes, item number 22 is requested by Deputy Mayor Lowry and Councilmember Kern to direct staff to bring back to council as soon as possible a resolution to support AB 1884, straws upon request, and an ordinance to ban the distribution of plastic straws in the city of Oceanside.
Okay. Thank you. I have a little presentation to make. It's just one paragraph. I have realized that straws apparently are just like cigarette butts. People throw them out all over the place at any time. So I was at the harbor for a facilities tour two days ago and straws were everywhere. They were on the sidewalk, they were in the water, they're all over the place. So the number of plastic straws currently ending up in our country's waste stream on a daily basis is over 500 million straws. That's every day. This is completely unrecyclable and unacceptable. The straws need to go into the trash, not just be thrown out the windows. So in an effort to pay attention to that, the state of California has proposed AB 1884. We are talking about supporting that bill as an easy way to show that we care about our local environment and help to clean up our city. We can do better than we have been doing based upon what I've seen. It's impossible to walk around anywhere, the beach, any of the neighborhoods, everywhere without encountering straws every, all over the place. Most of our restaurants are already implementing a straws on request policy, which just solidifies council support of responsible actions to reduce single use plastics in, in our waste stream. Was there a next? Is there a next?
Yeah, we, we brought this forward because, you know, the idea, this is, especially as a beach community, the idea of plastic pollution is something that we have to deal with. Even upstream pollution comes down to us. So the idea of straws on demand, and actually, we have talked about this and hopefully, and we talked about it with Carrie Deal, I'll let Carrie Deal comment on this, our Utilities Director, about having a workshop sometime in October, but not just about straws, but all, and, and you're gonna tell me the term, because I keep forgetting the term, about all plastic pollution that, that comes into the marine environment. So we need to figure this out because, and we're trying to do it voluntarily. I mean, right now, it's straws on demand. The idea that if you don't need a straw, don't get a straw. This wasn't a problem when I was a kid because we had paper straws and, and they were recyclable. So now with plastic straws, it seemed to last forever, you know, the idea that we need to do something with them. So Carrie, what term am I looking for?
Councilmember Kern, Honorable Mayor, and Councilmembers. It is, in the business, single use disposable marine debris ordinance is a term that's being used to comprehensively address a lot of the single use disposables as well as plastics.
And so I think, other than coming back with the ordinance, and I don't, this is not agendized here, but I'd like to see a workshop sometime in October addressing that issue. So I, I don't know, I guess we agendize it for the next council meeting to call for that workshop, or is that something we do now? Is it's not part of this agenda item here?
That could. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, right. It's not part of the agenda item. What we did prepare was the resolution to support the bill. And at this point, we have a pass through in your packet too. Our recommendation would be to wait and see what happens with the bill before we move forward on an ordinance. We have, we do not have a workshop scheduled at this point. If that's the direction of the collective council, that's another story, but you know, we think we need to wait and see what the mandate would be, if any, from the state, and spend the adequate time necessary to get the, get the word out.
Yeah, I, I'm actually being very selfish on this because in December, I will no longer be here, so I would like to have, you know, some action taken at least before December, what, 12th now?
December 12th, correct.
December 12th. So we, maybe at some future date, we can bring that back. So Deputy Mayor, you want to close on this and?
I have a request, Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
We do have public on this item too. I just want to let you know.
Thank you. So should we hear from the public first?
I just didn't know, that's why I figured we should hear from them first. Okay, perfect. So we have five speakers on this item. First, Janice Jones.
Ms. Janice, all right.
While he's finding that, can I go ahead and?
Sure.
My name's Janice Jones and I was here with a group of people on June 6th. Several students were here also to speak on the straws on request topic. We've been very busy since then. We've been doing outreach to restaurants and so our goal today was to report on that and to continue advocating. Thank you very much, Councilmember Kern, for wanting to get this done because it's really important that we do. So we had had 13 volunteers who have visited 92 restaurants in the months of July and August. And we've spoken to managers, owners, and employees about their thoughts about straws. Very casual conversations, but we were welcomed into their businesses and people were really engaged. They want to talk about this topic and they want to find solutions. So we visited all types of restaurants, fast food, fine dining, cafes, and we went to all areas of Oceanside to make sure we were representing the entire city. And the volunteers shared several pieces of information. We shared just a simple fact sheet about why this matters, why we want to take care of this problem. We also shared information about paper straws and where they could get discounts if they wanted to take that next step. And the city of Oceanside gave us table tents with the last straw printed on them and we've distributed a lot of table tents to restaurants. Some restaurants wanted table tents for every table in their restaurant. So 97% of the restaurant managers and owners that we spoke to are already implementing or want to begin implementing straws on request. So our visits have been a little nudge that have really got them moving on this. 90% of restaurant owners and managers are willing to support an ordinance. And there, there we are from June 6th. So I don't know, maybe I'll just keep going without the slides at this point. Several restaurants have already completely eliminated plastic straws and many are looking at alternatives and trying to figure out how they can make this work. Their primary concerns include staff training, customer awareness, and choosing appropriate The reason for supporting it are obvious. They're very concerned about the environment. They recognize that we're a coastal city and we have a direct impact. Everything that we do has a direct impact on the ocean. They're also concerned about dirty beaches and how that impacts tourism here in the city. And they're concerned about litter. They see litter around their restaurants and they see litter around the city. Their primary, or one of their primary reasons for supporting is it's good business and it will save them money ultimately. So our next steps are to continue advocating, to follow up with restaurant owners that wanted more information because many of them did have further questions and want more information. And that's where I think the workshops would really be beneficial, much more effective than us going and visiting individual, individuals. And we want to continue to work with Green Oceanside to help meet the zero waste goals. We want to continue to support AB 1884 and we're gonna continue advocating for a strong, comprehensive local ordinance here in Oceanside that includes straws and goes beyond straws to include those single use disposables that you were mentioning as well. There's a picture I took recently, walking at the beach at sunset and picking up straws and that's exactly what happens. Those are, that's typical number of straws that I pick up every time I go to the beach. My record is 150. That was after a storm. They came down the storm drain and so you don't have to look very hard to find, see straws on the streets and in the harbor. So thank you very much for your time.
Our next speaker is Lita Esposito.
Hi, my name is Lita Esposito. I'm a resident of Fire Mountain and a teacher at King Middle School. And I'd like to say with best practices come best results. So I'm very proud to know that the city of Oceanside is going to be moving forward. This was all good news to come here this evening and hear what you all had to say. So thank you so very much and we greatly appreciate that. I'd like to share one little comment as we were going out and doing the outreach with some of the restaurant owners. One restaurant owner commented, he hates straws. He says they clog up their drains, they get jammed in the dishwashers, it costs them lots of money. And anytime I had the opportunity to go to a restaurant and notice that they weren't giving out straws, I would always compliment them on them. They would be with, with pride because they like knowing that they're part of the solution. So I would just like to say thank you very much for all of your efforts and your consideration. And as a small little gift, compliments of 333 Restaurant, we're going to hand out to the council members and to our mayor, a straw that 333 is using. And you'll see that it's actually a really good quality product. And that is what we can look forward to in the future as we move forward with straws on request. So thank you so very much.
Our next speaker is Marissa Figueroa.
Hello Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Marissa Figueroa. I have a small business here in Oceanside on Coast Highway. It's called Sonora Refillery. It's an effort to conserve plastic waste. When I started my business, this was March of 2016, I was out of the farmer's markets. And it started because in 2015, I did some traveling, both here in the country and out, and discovered a lot about plastic waste, especially single use plastic waste. One of the most startling things that I discovered is that plastic is petroleum based. So that means every single piece of plastic is associated with the same stuff you fill up your gasoline, your car with. So when you describe this to a child, you know, when, when children come into my shop and they see a bamboo toothbrush and they get super excited because they've never seen a wooden toothbrush before, and they're, is that wood? And you're like, yeah, it is. And I said, do you currently brush with a plastic toothbrush? And they're like, yeah. And they're super excited about that. And I said, do you know that that plastic is made out of petroleum? They look like they have no idea what petroleum is. And when I say, it's the same stuff that's made out of gasoline that your parents put in the car. The first image that I get is like a child being told that Santa Claus is not real or that Santa Claus has been poisoning their toys. It's just, it's a shock. But all it takes is education and you tell somebody that once and from then on, everything that they view is different. We fortunately live in a coastal community. We have a lot of responsibility with that. Above a lot of our drains, it says drains to ocean. Yet, everything is petroleum based, that is single use plastic. And so we need to be very concerned. It's our responsibility. We have so much to preserve in this city, let alone this county. And so to continue this is to be ignorant and to continue this is to say that we don't, we don't cherish and value where we live and the citizens of this community, really. This is seriously affecting not just our community, it's affecting the world. Starbucks is gonna be banning straws, other countries are banning single use plastic in general. It's our responsibility. We can look like leaders or this can be forced upon us in the future, but it is inevitable at this point. And with education, it's only encouraged. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ashmeen Mahal.
Good evening Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Ashmeen Mahal. Plastic straws. Surprisingly, these two words have become quite the talking points in the span of a couple of months. Many restaurant chains have been replacing these plastic monsters with more environmentally beneficial products and systems, some being the very restaurants here in Oceanside. Over the past few months, I've had the pleasure to work with the straws on request camp. Over the past few months, I've had the pleasure to work with the straws-on-request campaign. One thing we focused on was doing restaurant outreaches. The amount of positive feedback was amazing. Almost every restaurant I visited had shown interest in straws-on-request. Whether they had already adapted the program or had asked to receive more information on the topic, the support was there. I was shocked to see how willing the restaurants were to hear me out and switch over to being a straws-on-request-only restaurant. I was even more surprised at how many restaurants had already adapted straws-on-request. That's why I'm so thrilled to see that the city is moving forward with supporting AB-1884 and even better considering a local ordinance. This will be a humongous step in the right direction. I had also recently attended a film screening of straws. I was surrounded by such amazing and intelligent people who are really making a change, and being in that room of people with such strong passions for environment really reiterated the importance of straws-on-request to me. That being that our environment needs help, and people really care about this issue. Passing AB-1884 is a really important step. This event had once again showed me that a lot of people are supportive, but the fight shouldn't just stop there. Like I said before, I think it's outstanding that the city is considering a local ordinance. Passing a local ordinance would be a game changer. The bigger steps we can take and the more impact we can make, the better. I have had such an amazing time participating in this campaign and seeing change take place has been so meaningful to me. I am so grateful for the opportunity to have made a positive contribution to alleviating the plastic pollution problem. I really hope that the council will continue to listen to the citizens of Oceanside and take a stand against plastic straws. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Noah Biles.
Hi, my name is Noah Biles, I'm a seventh grade at Caesar Travis Middle School. I was on Del Rio's Green Team for three years. In fifth grade, I learned a lot about marine debris, which is anything solid or man-made that isn't supposed to belong in the ocean. I was part of a fifth grade student who did a presentation about marine debris for you. At that time, the other students and I asked you, "What would you do to help us keep our ocean clean?" Did you know that every single hour enough trash enters the ocean to fill up sixty garbage And that one million seabirds and a hundred thousand marine mammals are killed or injured by plastic each year? One way it makes them sick is that they can eat it and they can't digest it. They get sick and they can even die. One turtle was put in danger when a straw got stuck up its nose. And a penguin died after its stomach was punctured by a straw it had eaten. Also, fifty-two percent of all sea turtles and ninety percent of all seabirds have already eaten plastic. Plastic debris, including straws, is bad for people because it is harmful chemical, has harmful chemicals in it. Fish eat plastic and we eat fish. Does that mean we eat harmful chemicals too? Fish, it's also bad for the economy because it takes a lot of money to clean it up, and people don't want to go to dirty beaches. Plastic straws are a problem because they usually can't be recycled and they don't biodegrade. You use a plastic straw once and we're stuck with it forever. There are many alternatives for the plastic straw, such as bamboo, paper, and metal, or don't use one at all. If we work together, we can make a difference. Will you help us keep our ocean clean? Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Oh, me. Fall on me.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Thank you. Well, I want to congratulate and really recognize Oceanside Unified School District Teacher Janice Jones for her battle, and her, and her small army of students who have gone basically door-to-door to all the restaurants and educated them, and I thank you so, so much, you guys really rock. I had the pleasure to meet you, some of you personally in a meeting, and then also I attended the Straws Suck program that was put up by, sponsored by Surf Rider, and on the panel after the film that the young man spoke about, that was about a twenty-minute film, I think it was about twenty minutes, that talked about how a lot, a lot of the damages that straws are doing to our, to our wildlife in the ocean, and how over half the straws are actually, or the majority of straws are on our beaches, and over half of the sea turtles in the world have ingested plastic. What they have been doing is so, so important to the city of Oceanside. I know our staff has been working with, with you, and with Colleen Foster, who unfortunately couldn't be here today, as you know, you know, she's, she's expecting any day and will be gone for three months. So, but in that, in what you guys have done, what's so and so important, what I always insist on, because we, we just don't, we don't want just the restaurants to, to not offer them unless by request, we want those who are going to the restaurants to not request them, right? I mean, that's really the thing that we're asking them to do. So I've got my medal one, right? And I think that the way we're going to do that is through the education, through what you've been doing, Janice, and all you kids, expanded to beyond the restaurants and, and to our community. I like the idea of coming back in December, I think that by then we ought to have information back on 1884. There have been some changes to the law. I know our staff would prefer to wait and see what happens to, you know, to the changes, but I think that, I feel that we need to make a statement, and I will be supporting that part of the motion, that is to, to direct staff to bring back a resolution in support of AB-1884. So I just want to thank you for all of that. I do think that, that perhaps in December we could, well, actually, we do have the resolution, right? So I would be supporting that resolution, yes. And that in December, what was it, December what day?
12th.
12th?
Well, the first city council meeting would be December 5th, but December 12th is when the council members will be sworn in.
Right, so December 12th? I don't know if that would be enough time for us to hopefully hear, because it would be, the state law would trump our law, in other words, just like what happened with the single-use plastic bag. We adopted a single-use plastic bag ban, and then, but we said, "Okay, let's see what happens with the state law," and the state law passed, and so that's why we ended up with, with the state law. So, you know, I think this is something we have to do, I know that we, staff is looking at beyond that, and other cities are looking beyond that. It's all about education, and thank you so much for taking that step to talking to all these restaurants. What was it, how many? Over ninety restaurants?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two restaurants, wow, that's fantastic. And ninety-seven percent said, "Yeah, we agree," right? So that's fantastic. So I would hope that by then, I would hope that by then we would be able to adopt our own ordinance. I don't know if we could set it for then, and then perhaps take it off if, if, if in fact by then the state has already adopted their own ordinance. But I know we, we need to move forward with the largest piece, right? We all know that, the elephant in the room, it's the Styrofoam, right? That is the largest piece, and that's going to take a lot of education, especially on, this is more like a source, this is, this is, this is definitely going to be the restaurants. And so next year, I look forward to working with you on that kind of a campaign next year, hopefully we can start the initial steps on that. But on this, I will be supporting the resolution, and I do think that by December we ought to be able to have our own, own ordinance, that is, if, if the state has failed to adopt their own ordinance. So thank you very much, you guys, you rock.
Deputy Mayor Lowry.
Thank you. So I'm hoping that we can send a statement of support for AB-1884, and I'm wondering if Director would tell us anything about that. Are there any issues with that or concerns? Can we just create a very simple letter to do that?
Honorable Mayor and council members, the resolution's already included in the item, and so that is ready to go and sent to the state.
Okay, thank you. And then as far as making a date of sometime in December, that would be after the election in November. I'd like to, since we have two or three votes on the council right now, and the election could get rid of two of those three votes very easily, I'm highly concerned about putting it off until the end of the year when nothing can possibly happen. So is there any problem with getting information together for us to have a meeting, let's say in November while we still have the seated council available, rather than putting it off and trying to kick the can down the road or the straw?
I think in staff's recommendation is to wait until spring or summer of 2019, the reason being that it takes a tremendous amount of effort to do comprehensive outreach to over four hundred businesses that would directly be affected by this ordinance. We do not have a small army, we have, we will have a staff of one after a week, and we do not have the staff to really put the effort into it due to other priorities, including an organics mandate, which will be worked on between now and that time. So we're better equipped to address an ordinance in the spring when we do have that staffing.
So realistically, if we made a motion now to do something in December, you wouldn't be able to do anything about it until three or four months later?
It's likely that it will take quite a while to do that type of an effort. For example, when we did the plastic bag ordinance, Colleen did seventy-five presentations throughout the community, as well as other outreach, to businesses that were specifically affected by the ordinance, and I just don't have the capacity with one person to do that level of outreach.
So is there a tentative date for when the Assembly Bill would pass or be?
My, my understanding is that we should typically know about these bills by the end of October, that's when they've, are fully gone through the legislative process, as well as through the governor's office.
So at that point, there, there might be a regulation in place already about straws, but we would like to do something much different than that?
If it does move forward, it would be effective in January 1st of 2019.
So it'd probably be smarter to schedule, reschedule this for the first quarter of next year then, rather than trying to do something now that we can't do anything with? My concern is that we will, we're throwing it away, literally, and not doing anything about it, or planning to do something about it in the first quarter or in the spring of next year. Maybe, that's a good answer. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Kern.
Deputy Mayor, are you done? Okay. Yeah, I'm a very firm believer of doing it right instead of trying to do it quickly, so I, I'm in concurrence that let's wait until we have all our ducks in a row before we move forward with this. I, I will not be here, there'll be somebody, a couple people in this audience may be sitting up here instead of me, but the idea that we get the ball rolling. I think the important part here has already been addressed tonight, and that's the education portion. You know, the more that we can talk to people and not have them demand a straw, or have restaurants, you know, offer not to have a straw, and, and change the behavior. You know, government, you know, trying to change people's behavior is not as effective as the collective pressure of peers changing the behavior. So talking to students, talking to restaurants, get them to change their behavior, I think will be more effective than us passing an ordinance, because, so I, I think that would be the best way, so I don't have to be here for that. But before I leave the subject, I, I really have to compliment the Deputy Mayor, because he really took the lead on this. You know, he kind of brought me in, and I wouldn't say browbeat me, but at least he convinced me this is something that we need to bring forward and to talk to the community about. So I do appreciate all his efforts and work. So I don't know exactly where we stand tonight, so staff, what do you think we're doing here?
Could we hear the resolution? What's being proposed?
Yeah, yeah, the resolution of support of 1884, is that all? Voting, you, you made the motion? Did I?
There hasn't been a motion yet.
Okay.
No motion.
No, there, there's no motion yet.
Okay, so you're going to make that motion?
Yes.
Okay. It, it sounds like you already have a second from Councilmember Sanchez, so.
Okay.
Councilmember Feller.
I'll second it. Or did you already second it?
We don't even, we don't have a motion yet.
Oh, I thought you said you had a motion, oh. I don't know what we'd have done without a plastic straw that bends for the last three years with my mother-in-law. A total ban is, can affect a hundred-year-old woman who can't do anything but take liquid by a straw that bends, so, so there's other sides of this, but I, I do like the idea of the straw on demand, so if, if that's what you're, you're doing here, I, I'll be glad to support that, and I really appreciate the young people that are going out and making a difference in, in attitudes by restaurant owners, because when I had my restaurant, I don't know how you get to five hundred million straws a day, but that's like two for every person in the United States, so I, I, but that's a lot of straws if that's the case, so, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Sanchez.
Yes, thank you. I did want to underscore that we do need to continue the outreach and the education, because it is changing habits, just like Colleen did, the seventy-five, time she went out to, homeowners associations, neighborhood associations, I mean, it was just really great. What the, what the, there have been some changes to the, to AB-1884, so it currently reads, "This bill would prohibit a full-service restaurant," it used to be food facility, "a full-service restaurant as specified from providing single-use plastic straws as defined," and there's a definition for that, "to consumers unless requested by the consumer. The bill would specify the first and second violations would result in notice of violation, and any subsequent violation would be an infraction punishable by a fine of $25 for each day. The full-service restaurant is in violation, but not to exceed an annual total of $300." The provisions would be enforced by the same officers authorized to enforce California Retail Food Code. And so if, if we want to extend it, that would have to be by our own, and, and probably next year would be a good time to be looking at that, if we needed to expand beyond that. But yes, I think that it would be, it would be great to go ahead and, and support 1884, and so Chuck, you're going to be making the motion?
A motion I would make would just be to approve the resolution.
Right, the resolution that's already?
Yeah.
In the, okay. So yeah, I would be happy to second that, and I look forward to working with the kids, and Ms. Janice, you guys rock, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Lowry? Is there a motion?
Want to make the motion that we approve the resolution as written.
So a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion approved, five-zero.
Let's go to eighteen, please, the public hearing.
Yes.